I think we're ready to go. And I see Pam. Hi Pam.
You see Julie.
Julie, not me Julie, I'm sorry.
Hi Julie.
Hi Julie.
Julie, how are you? All right, I think, I think we're good to start.
All right. Good evening buddy and welcome to the February 16th meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. Due to COVID regulation, we are having yet another meeting via Zoom. We will see if that changes anytime in our our near future. Tonight, we will, we will have public hearings. At the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members will be able to ask questions along with the town attorney and town, our executive secretary for the board and other town staff. Once we've had our chance to ask questions of the applicant, we will open up the conversation to the public for the public hearing portion only, and that does not apply to the application that is before us for concept review tonight. But you are welcome to listen to our deliberations. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the role for tonight?
What?
Was, who did you ask for?
Uh, for.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Babcock Steiner.
He's there. He said yes.
Do we have muted by any chance?
Yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't let me unmute. So yes.
I can see your panicked face. You got some, uh, Mr. Fader. David, you're on mute?
He's on mute.
He's been called.
Cat. You're here. Price.
Here.
Altman.
Here.
Absinthe Delaney.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will take a moment to do our agenda review. This is between the board members and town staff. Just gives us an opportunity to review the agenda for tonight.
Yes, the, um, the first item 12 P two 21. Thirty, 300 Brighton Henrietta Town Line Road. And all the necessary variances have been obtained from the zoning board of appeals. The project has been approved by the architecture review board. Um, is a demolition involved in this application? And we will need to, if the board is going to consider approval of this project, need to include the demolition findings and its conclusions. And the last thing is I do have a recommendation of a condition that all review comments need to be addressed and the plans need to be signed by the commissioner of public works within 90 days of approval. Um, just so they finish this matter up.
Right.
Um, I don't know if anyone has any questions or any comments on that for me before I move on.
I'm good if we can move on.
Okay, the next application is the Cortez Properties at 2771 West Henrietta Road. Application 2PO122. Um, in that application, I did receive a test at the end of the day. Um, an email from Bob Harding, who is a neighbor of the property that lives there. Worried about the, um, the motorcycle shares and another motorcycle repair shop and sale shop so close to one another that they are driving up and down the streets unregistered on holiday. Um, um, and they rev their engines. Um, and he is concerned about that. They say that they work outside during the summer evenings. Um, also they have no green space setbacks or town board required. And so he is a little frustrated with how the, his existing shop is going to be his second shop is operating. So when we go to the hearing, we may want to talk with him about that. That was submitted to us. I think that's the, that what I have on that one.
Hey Ramsey, question about that one. So they have an existing Cortez Cycle Shop.
Yes, they do.
This is another one right next door to it.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Once after, kind of like dealerships. I think, could ask them about that. The, uh, next application. Which is 12 P, uh, 2P two 22, 2900 Monroe Avenue. Really, the big thing there is in, as this project goes along, just like when they came in with dumpster. They will with each, each future new tenant, a park analysis would be required, showing compliance with the town requirements. Um, we can ask the usual questions about their, their procedures, operations, trash, and those type of things.
I have no other questions.
Next application 2P three 22 has been withdrawn. That's the application of Denali's for the conditional use permit at 2740 Monroe Avenue. Application 2PO four 22. Application of James Tabby. For, uh, application for 830 Highland Avenue. Um, that looks like it's pretty well set. Um, they are not, only thing they're really looking for right now is site plan approval. Uh, preliminary final to construct the house. Um, they need an EPOD permit. They have submitted the necessary geotechnical report. Um, there is no longer a lateral going up the side of the hill, but there is an easement and a tap for a future lateral up the hill, uh, which would be a future action. Um, they got their ARB approval. They modified the driveway to become in compliance with the code, skipping the need to go for a variance.
Okay.
And that is for preliminary and final combining the two applications. The next application 10P MB one 21, the application of, uh, 1915 and 1966 Monroe Avenue LLC Quicklies. Uh, that has been adjourned. Um, the last, then the next application is the application of the University of Rochester. Um, for preliminary site plan approval. We have received the conservation easement. We have met with them about the water supply system.
Okay.
Further analysis on the hydraulic modeling is needed.
Um, Ramsey, I have a question about that.
Sure.
So why does the Town of Brighton do the quality control checking on the hydraulic modeling? I mean, U of R's engineers you, you know, use their high powered computer program to do that, to make sure that they're meeting their clients' needs. Why are we going back? I, I, it's confusing to me. Why we're spending town time doing quality control review of the engineer's design of the water system for the University of Rochester?
Cause we have, we have to verify that we don't need the extended layout from, from in the road all the way down to the facility, that we only need the connection from West Henrietta Road. So for me to offer to say, hey, this is in compliance, they do really need to fix their modeling, John, before we can say that we have adequate sprinkler pressure. If our marshal needs to look at that information and verify to us that he has adequate pressure. And that we think we will have it.
Okay. All right. I, I still don't understand, but there, there you go. Okay.
Um, John, if you do not want to have the, um, if you do not want to hold up the application over that, um, that is the choice of the planning board.
All right. Well, that, cause that seems to be the last sticking point is, you know, crossing the Ts and dotting the I on a computer model that's analyzing the hydraulic water system.
Well, John, uh, this is Ken Gordon, John. Um, there are some issues with the proposed conservation easement as well. I'm going to be asking some questions of the University of Rochester staff this evening during the public hearing. Um, and I expect that there's going to need to be some additional work and revision for the proposed easement.
Okay. All right.
John, you understand the finding statement said that both those improvements need to be made with future development? And they're only making one of them? So when our, so when we go back and review this, we do need to summarize our review of the matter. Justifying why they're only putting in the West Henrietta Road. Section of it.
Okay. All right.
Cause water pressure and supply is an issue over there.
Gotcha. Okay.
Um, I think that's everything for the U of R. Any other comments on that?
Uh, Ramsey, real quick, can we tie, uh, the two James Tabby applications into one hearing?
Yes, you should.
Okay.
Your ass on preliminary and final.
Okay.
Uh, the la, the next one is 2P MB one 22. Which is a concept review, which has been postponed to the March 16th meeting.
Okay.
Next application is that Tom Mutical Institute, application 2P NB two 22. As you know, this is just a concept review for a discussion for these applicant to present the project for the first time to you. It's not a public hearing. Uh, there will be a number of people that are attending to want to listen to this. As we've received a number of letters, um, most of them, we were able to get on the agenda before we had to publish it. Uh, we will be sending out all those communications to the board, the rest of those communications as we receive them. Um, there's a number of them, uh, various concerns dealing with drainage, traffic, change of character of the neighborhood, et cetera. Um, you can read them as you go through them. Um, so that's not all I have on the town mutical institute. There will be, um, if they move forward after this, um, further, uh, actual public hearings where the public will be able to uh, speak on this matter and give us our concerns, comments, support or opposition. And that's about all I have on that. Does anyone have any questions on that one, John?
Uh, we, I just want to let the rest of the board know for that application, John will uh, serve as chair, um, listening to that, I'm going to institute application. I will have to recuse myself from that.
And what recusal looks like on Zoom bill, uh, cause we don't have you physically go out of the room or anything, obviously, but if you would just put yourself on mute and turn off your video camera.
Will do. All right. Uh, any board members have other questions, uh, regarding the agenda? All right, let's move on. Um, I think we, I just noticed that our, uh, meeting minutes for December and January uh, came in this afternoon and the, uh, the agenda this does say that we will review and approve uh, December, January, and hopefully February at the, uh, March 16th meeting. Uh, Mr. Secretary, the public hearings that, uh, we're going to have tonight, have those been properly advertised?
Yes, they were properly advertised in the daily record of February 10th, 2022.
Thank you. We're going to hold those, uh, public hearings now. Application on tonight is 12P zero two 21. This is the application of FSI Frankenvergia owner for 3300 Brighton Henrietta Town Line. BHTL Partners LLC Preliminary and Final Site Plan Approval. EPOD, uh, permit approval and demolition review, uh, to raise a 10,000 square foot existing building. Uh, good evening. Who's here representing? FSI.
Uh, good evening, board members. David Cox, the Past Row Associates. Um, just real briefly, uh, the project did receive site plan approval and variances back in 2019. Um, then with COVID and everything that kind of got put on hold and those approvals expired. Um, so we are back before, uh, to get reapproval. We did receive the variances, the, the, the reapproval of the variances we needed. Um, and we have addressed all top town staff comments. And, uh, that's, that's where we're at, here for reapproval of the site plan.
Okay. David, so, uh, variances were re-secured again. And you, did you go back to the conservation board this time as well?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And I take it the, all of the results, uh, and ARB, all of the results are the same. Everybody else's has approved. Well, some are advisory, but, uh,
Yes.
DBA and ARB did, uh, did approve.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, this one does seem fairly straightforward. Uh, to me, I don't, uh, personally have any, any further questions. Uh, board members have any questions? I'm looking at, I'm not seeing any.
I know the, um,
Oh, John, sorry.
Yeah, I think it was the conservation board, uh, was concerned about snow storage being, um, trying to confine it to the south edge of the parking lot versus the north edge to try to keep runoff and melt out of Allen Creek. And does that seem feasible to the developer to do that when you're doing snow removal?
Uh, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Uh, Julie or David, anyone else? No, Karen. All right, Ramsey, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I do, Bill. Um, will there be a basement?
No basement.
No basement. Um, do you guys have the, um, easement to, uh, for, to have access on the canal view straightened out yet?
We have it all drafted, uh, but it is not filed yet.
Okay, so you have that all set?
Yeah.
The other thing is, can you look at the biofiltration along the road that's actually in the proposed sidewalk easement? I mean, the sanitary easement to see if you can slide that further north?
Okay, yeah.
You have a little room there? And the issue there folks is that where they're putting the biofiltration, they're also, um, providing as a future sanitary sewer easement or an easement, uh, for future extension of the sanitary sewer. And we're asking that the biofiltration be moved further to the north to give a little bit more room. And minimize the future disturbance of what their improvements.
David, you feel that's achievable?
Yes. Yep. Thank you.
All right.
That's all I had. Jeff, did you have anything?
I think that's all my.
Uh, Ken Gordon, anything from you?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, David, thank you. Uh, this is an app, uh, this is a public hearing and therefore we would invite the public to make any comments with regard to this application. Is there anyone interested in asking question or making a statement? Please, uh, use the raise hand feature. If all else fails, just wave your arms frantically and uh, Brendan, Jeff or Ramsey will try to find you.
I don't see anybody.
Right. Okay, thank you. Uh, our second application tonight is 2PO one 22. The application of Cortez Properties, uh, and Cortez Cycle Sales for a conditional use permit. Allowing motorcycle sales and services at property, uh, located at 2771 West Henrietta Road. Uh, is there anybody representing the applicant here tonight?
And I don't see him on here. I think we're looking for Johnny Cortez, but he, he said that he might not be able to make the meeting, so.
Okay, we, um, Ramsey, you, you, you made a a comment of, or relayed a comment from an adjacent, uh, property owner is, uh, shall we uh, hold this and ask one more time later in the, uh, agenda?
Yeah, at the end of the public hearings, we, let's recall it to see if anyone's joined us.
All right.
And then at that time, we can determine what we want to do with it. We did, we did get a call saying, as Jeff said, they might not be able to make it.
And, uh, Ramsey, I, I don't know if, or Bill, I should say, actually, I don't know if there's anyone else on the Zoom conference from the public that wish to comment, but if they are on the Zoom conference, they should be given the opportunity, even though the applicant is not here.
Uh, very good.
That is good.
For the application of Cortez in a motorcycle sales shop on West Henrietta Road, is there anyone who cares to address this application?
Jason has his hand raised.
I didn't touch anything.
Okay.
Stay away from the monitor. Okay.
Other than that, I don't see anybody.
No one. All right. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Um, let's move on to, uh, application 2PO two 22. This is 2900 Monroe Avenue LLC and Unlimited Nutrition LLC for a conditional use permit. Um, allowing a retail facility which prepares and sells nutritional shakes and teas. Property located at 2900 Monroe Avenue. Is there anyone here to address this application?
Kim Guadieri.
Jennifer Bustamante.
Good evening. How are you?
Thank you.
Good.
Great, thank you. Um, please, uh, what we usually ask you to do is, um, talk a little bit about your, your operation. We, we, we know the plaza. If you could, uh, for the public's sake, uh, joining the meeting tonight, tell us the space you're in, a little bit about the business and things like your hours of operation and how you manage, you know, product coming in, uh, refuse going out, your hours of operation, that kind of stuff.
Sure, yeah, I'll go through kind of the questions that we had answered. Um, so we, um, do have a current location located in Fairport. Um, so that's kind of how we have gotten most of these answers just due to that, uh, already being in place. Um, we make protein shakes and teas using powders. We don't use any, um, actual like green leaves or fruits and vegetables. It's our powder, powder mixes, um.
Uh, it's all mixed with, um, ice and water. There's no dairy at all.
We, um, we have about five employees max at one time on the premises.
That's the busy times on Saturdays and Sundays.
And then, um, as for hours of operation, we, uh, are going to operate Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then on the weekends, we are there from 9:00 AM till 3:00 PM. On Saturday and Sunday. Um, we would be located right next to the TC Nail Bar and, uh, Basha right next door as well. Um, we get deliveries once or twice a week via FedEx and, uh, it would be during business hours only through the front door. Um, our trash, we have a 33 gallon trash bag that we have just for straw paper.
Paper towels.
Paper towels.
Uh, canisters that our protein comes in.
Um, so it's usually one bag in evening and maybe once or twice a week, depending on the delivery, we would have a couple of, uh, cardboard boxes as well. Um, and as I mentioned, we only use ice and water for all of our products. Um.
We usually have about like five to 10 people in the store at a time and that's busy.
It's usually kind of a grab and go sort of.
People don't usually hang out.
Yeah, they just grab a tea or a shake and then head out.
So they're not seating you, how much?
We will have seating for them and we do have seating at our current facility, but, uh, for the most part, people grab and go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You do have access to the refuse dumpsters that the plaza has in the back?
Yes.
You don't have to secure your own?
No.
Service at all?
Not at all.
And, and the, like you said, the, uh, what you serve in is, um, pretty, people pretty much take it with them and.
Yes, they're all to-go containers. Nothing is, uh, like in a glass or something that you would sit, that you would take back. Yeah.
Do you have access to that patio that's outside?
I don't think so. I think that's Basha's. Yeah, we're unaware of that being for us.
I see. Okay. All right, and, and, and none of, uh, of your proposal is uh, includes doing anything to the exterior of the building or?
We're just a sign, um, that we would need to get approval for, but that would be it.
Yep.
All right. All right. Thank you. Can I ask the other board members if there's other questions from the board?
Yeah, this is John. I have a question. So, so I assume these are always plastic cups that probably 80% of them get thrown in the trash and straws likewise.
Yep.
Um, are your straws transitioning to a material other than plastic, do you know?
We are looking into alternatives. Yes, we haven't found necessarily, um, a great solution for it, but it's definitely something that we are looking into. A lot of our cups that we do purchase are from recycled plastic as well. Um, we try and be conscious of that just um, due to the fact that most, all of them are served in plastic, but, um, currently, right now, we use traditional straws, but that is something that we want to transition over to for sure.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, Jason, you have any questions?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Julie, Karen?
No. I'm all set.
All right, David Fader? Can't see him, so I don't know if he's seen. I'm assuming David's good. All right.
Yes, I'm good.
Thank you. You know, I got a big screen and I got this drawing in front of me, David.
And I can't find a little mute button.
Jeff can find that for you. All right. Uh, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to address this application for unlimited nutrition?
I don't see anybody.
Okay.
Hey, uh, Ramsey, or this is, this is Ken. Ramsey or Jeff, I don't know if either of you had any questions you wanted to ask?
I did not.
No, me neither.
I, I just have one. Um, I, in the, uh, documents, I thought I saw a reference to delivery service being the predominant means. Not grab and go. And so I might be confused on that, but could you just explain how much of your business is delivery? And how your delivery function works? Is that through employees or is that, uh, some third party vendor that provides your delivery?
We currently do not offer delivery service.
We, you can call ahead and just pick it up, but that's pretty much all that we do right now. We you can call ahead and just pick it up, but that's pretty much all that we do right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I will just ask one more time if there's anyone in the audience listening that would like to comment on this application or ask a question. All set, Jeff?
Yep.
All right. Again, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, the next application is two P O three twenty-two. This application of Daniele LLC for twenty-seven forty Monroe Avenue has been withdrawn by the applicant. The next application is two P O four twenty-two, the application of James Tabby owner for final site plan approval and final EPOD. I would like to have everyone note that we are going to combine this hearing with application ten P NB two dash twenty-one, which is the same app, the same project, but for preliminary site plan approval. So we are talking about both preliminary and final site plan approval. EPOD permit as well for this project. Is there anyone here representing the owner?
Yep, thank you. Evan Gaffel with Costage Engineering. I also have James Tabby is on as well. So we were last in front of the board, your board in December. There were a number of comments that we received from the staff. A lot of technical comments we received from the engineering department. Within that timeframe, we did meet with the town staff, went over the details and came up with the solutions and added the necessary improvements per town code and requirements. We were able to shift the driveway to the west to eliminate the need for the variance. We do have that stub up to the property above that again, that will be under separate application for that. And again, the a lot of the focus was focusing on because of steep slope, you know, doing redundancy in green infrastructure practices, sediment erosion control, doubling up on methods just to control the site. We have gone to ARB. And as Ramsey stated, you know, we do have that geotechnical report. So I guess that's an overview since the last time we were in front of the board.
Jeff, do you have the grading plan for this? Is that in sequence here that you've got?
It is, yeah. Brendan has it. He'll pull up.
Okay. Okay, so the last time we saw this, I think there was a the question about extending the sanitary along the it was the sanitary, correct, along the east property line?
It's correct.
From the lower level up to the higher elevation of the site. And that has been modified so that that is not part of this application at this time or?
Yep, correct. They updated it just to have a a single stub coming up in that area.
Okay. All right. And and another, other than Ramsey and Jeff, this is essentially the same application that we saw in December.
Yes, they they moved the driveway a little bit to the left. There's an updated plan. This one shows the driveway in the previous location. But they're they did update that a little bit.
And and are we looking at that updated plan right here?
I am just about to pull it up.
Thank you.
I guess I opened the wrong file.
Yeah, I think I was thinking that myself. The driveway should be four feet off that.
Yeah, it looks like it. There we go. All right. Okay.
Some of the things that we worked on too was how the storms and sanitary systems were going to work.
Okay.
There is an easement that they are providing in the stubs. Maybe one question I do have, Evan, could you tell us what the recommendations of the geotechnical report?
Sure. So the an overview of it, I would say, is the the subsurface condition of the property or is holds a good structural quality. So they have given a recommendation of the foundations, which haven't changed since the original structural design. And then beyond that, you know, it's just removing the top soil under any concrete, making sure the grade is graded away from the foundation. Those those are the main things and just to compact to make sure that the process and compaction is right when the foundation is being installed. All that detailed information along with the rebar recommendations will be on the building permit plans that's submitted to the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions. Board members have any further questions for the applicant?
No.
Thanks, Julie. Jason, I see your.
I'm all good.
And all right, John or Karen?
Yeah, I this is I'm good.
You're good. Karen, you're all set?
Yes.
You and David Fader shake your heads.
I'm good.
You're good.
I can speak again.
All right. Ken Gordon? You all set?
Me. Yep, I'll I'll set.
All right, thank you. All right.
I just, Bill, I just got another question or concern that we have.
Okay.
How will the access be maintained for your neighbor's driveway?
During that cut, so it's going to be open cut. As of right now, we're thinking open cut is the best option unless we can directional drill. But with that, we will, you know, the contractor will provide a plate. It should be a fairly quick connection, you know, and it will be backfilled and stoned and and taken care of. So the access is coordinated with that neighbor.
And the last thing is with the driveway, how's how's the water that's going down the driveway going to be captured to minimize the water from flowing into or onto Island Avenue?
So it's you know, the the driveway snakes, the way the grading is working, it will kind of sheet flow and then dissipate out. Just bringing up the side. To more of the east, you know, we can work with the engineering, your engineering department to come up with a something to dissipate that at a greater volume.
Yeah, there's also maybe a catch basin or something in the area.
I think there's one nearby that we could look at.
Yeah.
Somehow tie.
I think that's what the engineering department was thinking too.
Yep, yep. There's a number of them.
Okay.
Okay.
Evan, you you guys did not get ARB approval for X table at the last meeting?
Um, I I was not at the ARB.
Okay. Yeah, I think it was table that it's on for the it'll be on the meeting for next Tuesday.
Next week?
Yep. All right. And I have one more comment. The the last thing is there's a lot of heavy grading going on on the site. Have you looked at how the grading might affect the trees? Because although they're they're existing grading, putting a lot of grading up next to the trunks might be harmful to the trees in the long run.
Yeah, you know, we really took a look based on the last round of comments. And there were just there were some trees that were in question of where could we save them? Unfortunately, you know, with the grading that was involved, those ones, we really didn't think we were able to. So we tried to to really minimize and pull back the grade of what we're doing to essentially the drip lines. Some may have a little more, but I think, you know, the the most important thing would be to try to protect that area with the orange construction fencing, just to keep the contractors off of them or from wandering beyond the scope of work.
Okay.
All right. Town staff and board members were all set with questions and comments?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to address the application?
There is Scott Gudell.
Okay, welcome.
Brendan, do you want to unmute him?
Scott, I think you can go now.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me ask a couple of questions. I'm assuming you can hear me?
We can.
Yes, we can.
Terrific. So as some of you know, I live on Summit Drive right near Clinton and Highland. And Summit Drive has no sewers at this point. So there's been a little bit of discussion about whether this lateral would be able to help some houses on Summit tie into sewers in the future. So one of my neighbors suggested I reach out to Costage and to Turner. Turner has been great. They got back to me. They gave me some great information. So kudos to Turner. I really appreciate them getting back to me. Costage is obviously involved in the lateral. Originally, there was two, maybe there was three. I have no idea. You know, I'm not a real estate attorney. So here here's my question. I reached out to Costage several times, actually three times and did not get a response. And then on the fourth, I talked to one of the owners for a few minutes and she assured me that somebody would get back to me. Unfortunately, I haven't talked to anybody at Costage. So here's my question. I I don't really understand the laterals. I guess it's been reduced down to one. Does that give people on Summit an option in the future to get a second or a third lateral if they want to tie into the sewers? So I I guess that's really my only question at this point is if you guys approve one, does that eliminate us from doing something in the future? Or do we still have the opportunity to potentially, if we want to tie into the sewers in the future?
I'm going to ask that question of Ramsey and our attorney. Is this is this a matter that Scott's asking about? Is this a matter that's just a private matter between two property owners?
It it is. It's not. It is a matter between two property owners in the sense that one, I did want to say there is no lateral that's being proposed as part of this application now. It's just they're just giving them an easement. They will have to come back for the lateral approval at a later date. We have no no ability, no right, no authority to force a property owner to give easements at this moment. This is not a subdivision. This is a site plan approval. So you would have to work with the property owners to get the necessary easements. And then you really have to figure out, will it work? And two, you'd probably be looking at trying to do a main and that gets very expensive. I don't think you'll have enough houses in that service area to cover that cost, but that's what you want to consult with an engineer about.
Right, yeah. And that's one of the reasons I reached out to Costage, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to reach them. So I guess the the I do understand what Ramsey said, that it's it's a conversation between two private property owners. I just wanted to make sure that it doesn't totally one hundred percent eliminate the possibility of doing something in the future. And it and based on what you said, that that possibility does still exist, which is good.
Yeah, I don't know what possibilities do exist, but it's not not anything at this point that we can, you know, say you can do or not do.
Correct. No, I I understand that. So all right, well, that that answers my question for this point. I understand the
Okay.
the parameters you have to work in within. So I appreciate your time and I appreciate you letting me ask that question. Thank you.
And Scott, I want to apologize. I I never got any contact or any messages that you had been trying to contact me personally.
Yeah, I was told to reach out to Mark Ritchie, so I called him three times and then I called Sarah once.
Okay, I will follow up with that.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I mean, I I it looks like a nice design for the house. And this is a once probably in a lifetime opportunity to maybe get some sewers onto Summit. So I just want to make sure the the ship doesn't pass us by. So that's why I'm asking these questions at this point. But yeah, if you could reach out to me or or somebody else, that would be great.
I just made note of that. Hey, Jeff, I think James is unmuted. Thank you. I just wanted to say I'm more than willing to have that conversation about what might need to be done regarding helping my neighbors on Summit.
Yeah, that'd be great. So we'll we'll talk offline. So thank you very much for letting me ask my questions.
And Scott, I will reach out to you and set something up.
Very cool. Thank you. Thanks, Ramsey. I appreciate it.
Sure. We'll see you, Scott.
Okay. No more video from me.
All right. All right, thank you. Is there any that cares to address this application? Seen anybody, Jeff? Ramsey?
I'm just going to look in.
And I and I know Jason's got his hand up and he does probably doesn't.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. I'm literally just sitting here. I haven't touched the iPad. I don't know.
All right.
Computer's taking you over.
It is.
Technology wins.
All right. All right, thank you. Evan and James, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We are going to. So that was actually two applications. We're going to move on to new business here, which is application ten P NB one twenty-one. This is nineteen fifty and nineteen sixty-six. Monroe Avenue has been postponed by the applicant until our March meeting. And the next application would be twelve P NB one twenty-one, the application of the University of Rochester for preliminary approval, preliminary EPOD permit and a conditional use permit approval for sixty-one thousand square foot, three-story addition to the laser energetics or my apologies, the laboratory for laser energetics at two fifty East River Road. Representatives for the university. Is that you, David?
Yeah, that's me, David Cox with Pastoral Associates, a civil engineer for the project. And I also have a bunch of people from U of R as well as Jared Lusk, who worked on drafting the conservation easement. So he's on the call to answer any specific questions about that. Um, could you go to the number three, the LLE development plan?
You know, page that's on.
This looks like a different a different document from.
Yeah, check the February folder.
Yeah, this looks like from an older application.
I believe I believe that's the most current one I have. Let me check.
No, it is not.
Is it?
Jeopardy music or something?
Yeah. Yeah.
You sing for us?
I guess I can talk, so. The West Henrietta Water Main Connection, we did meet with Mike Guyan and Everett. We are. Addressing, working on addressing those comments. There is four trees that would be disturbed as part of that water main connection. So we are proposing additional trees. To mitigate those losses. So there's been an increase in the number of. Tree mitigation.
And where is that, David? Is that over by West Henrietta?
Yes.
Okay, so that's right, right at the connection.
Yes, and we also have proposed some landscaping around the hot box to help shield that. Yeah, so it looks like, yeah, this is all the, an older application as well. But if this, I mean, I can speak to. To that one and and say what's different, if this is what.
No, let's, Jeff, do you have any chances of being able to get the latest up?
Hey, baby jackpot.
Here you go.
So number three, LLE development plan. Yeah, there we go. Perfect, thank you. So at the last planning board meeting. We just had that blue hatch down at the south along the neighboring residential property. In a 25-foot swath of the green hatch. So we had those conservation easement areas and after. This planning board meeting that we had last, last month, there was the request about a. You know, can we put a conservation easement in the north-south direction over the vernal pool, over the proposed wetland area? To really tie that whole conservation easement area together to provide that habitat corridor. To that south area. So we, we have revised that. We've added over two acres of additional. Conservation easement area. And there's kind of a, two different types of conservation easement area. The blue. Is, I guess you would call a, like a no-fly zone, no disturbance conservation easement area. There's no proposed work that can be done in those areas. You know, only if there was, you know, a a dead tree that needed to come down or, you know, any forest management type thing, but. You know, no, no disturbance, no, no structures, no utilities, no nothing in that area. And then the green area is a, what what we're calling a non-impervious. Conservation easement. So that would be no pavements, no buildings, no structures would be allowed in that area. But stormwater management, utility piping, utility pipes of below-ground utilities. So that the above surface will be vegetation, whether it be grass, meadow, trees, what have you. But it would be protected from, from any, you know, hard surfaces being in that area. There was, is one exception area. If you can zoom in on that, kind of the plan on the left. We have a proposed stormwater management area on the, kind of the left side of that blue hatch. And then there's the existing stormwater pond on the other side of the blue hatch. So we did, there is a little bit of an exception. Area, there's a little note pointing to it that that we would need to put a storm pipe through there. To be able to tie the existing store or the existing stormwater management area to the proposed stormwater management area. So that we're not cut off from, from being able to do drainage. But that would be the only thing that we would just need to put one pipe, a storm pipe through that area. So I think that that is.
So.
Yeah.
It's, I guess, you know, in. Down to really, are we, can we agree we're kind of down to the language of the easement? And I'd like to hear from Ramsey and Ken as well as the hydraulic analysis on the, on the water main.
I'd like, I'd like, Bill, I'd like to know a little bit more. Maybe it's from David, maybe it's from Jared, maybe it's from somebody else. What is the intention of the university with respect to the impervious areas? Why are we not making those just outright conservation areas? Accepting out maybe the installation of utilities? What else is it that you're planning that you're not telling us?
We're not planning anything, Ken. What 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 the issue is, is that we want to be able to, we have no idea what's going to happen there towards the south. We want to be able to grade. We want to be able to do things necessary to facilitate the potential future parking lot and things like that. So utilities, drainage, soils, things like that. We don't want to build anything, but we don't want it to be the no-fly zone that's in the blue area. The blue area, all we can do is trim trees, things like that, leave it as it is. In the green area, we want to degrade, et cetera, as necessary for the project. So we are distinguishing between those two areas.
And the, the green area to the east is over the existing stormwater management area, which, you know, would need to be maintained. There's sanitary sewer pipes or storm sewer pipes running through that area that would need to be maintained or replaced and things of, of that nature as well.
And there's other easements that we might require other installations that aren't, you can see the other easements areas. So it's. We're not intending to do anything, but we were very restrictive in the. And again, to to use, to keep using the same term, that the no-fly zone, again, only leave it in its natural state except for. Et cetera, so that you can't touch the rest of it. We're able to 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 manage and grade and things for the future project. And we just can't put impervious surface buildings or or blacktop.
So I I guess, Mike, before we get to what it is that you are allowing yourself to do in what you're calling the no-fly zone. But I would call the kinda conservation area, because you're allowing yourself to do quite a bit in that area. But in this green area. I I'm just struggling with how broad the language allows you to do anything, anything. You could bulldoze the whole thing. You can remove 100% of the vegetation in that green area. You can fill everything in. You can do whatever you want, as long as you know, you can put down pavement. As long as it's pervious pavement. Yeah, I don't know that that's going to be acceptable to the town.
Again, anything we do has to be, has to be approved by the planning board. And what this board indicated is that they didn't want future buildings. They wanted to know that what this project was, it was done. So we have done that. The only buildable area that you see in front of you is in the, in the orange area in terms of buildings, et cetera. We don't know what's going to happen 30 years from now. So the conservation easement. We, again, we are trying to give, again, keep calling it the no-fly zone. That was important for people. The rest of it, as we stated the first time, we can't give up all property rights to non-disturbance area to the. Because we're going to have to grade around that future parking lot. And so it was not to be cute, it was to say, look, we're not building anything, but we don't want to. We don't know what we're going to need in the future. And so, and we can't do anything in in the blue areas, except maintenance. And again, the language was intended to be as broad as possible. And the green was the reverse. We we, we're leaving ourselves open to do the things necessary to construct that would be permitted. By the planning board as part of a site plan approval process. But again, as far as giving away our property rights, we would only be giving up our rights to buildings, impervious surfaces, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm ju, I'm just wondering if there's some better way to craft the language for the impervious. Conservation area that gives the university the flexibility that it sounds like it wants to do what it may need to do in that area. And then the other piece of this that I'll introduce to you and, but, you know, your whole team is here. Is perhaps putting something in this conservation easement itself. That allows for the amendment or modification in the future of the. Terms of the conservation easement, which would be under the control of the planning board and/or the town board. To modify it in such a way that could meet future unanticipated needs. I I understand, we don't have a crystal ball that goes very far into the future. I get that. But I I do want to make sure that we, you know, protect this area as as intended. And yet still have that flexibility. So, so sort of keep that in mind too, that while I, I, at least from my perspective, I think we ought to. Craft a little bit more specific language about the. The impervious or non-impervious area, I guess, or the impervious area, the, the. Flexibility of having some future modifications is also something that I think we can write into this. But let me just switch gears for a second and ask about the actual conservation area and some of the terminology you're using and. What your intention is, what it means. So you say it's a no-fly zone. But you're also allowing yourself as the grantor to do selective pruning. What does that mean? What's, who defines what selective pruning is?
I I guess the, the, I think it's all. Select, it's all referencing the, it says engage in selective pruning, remove unsafe or exotic. Non-native vegetation in accordance with current scientific management practices, conduct such standard and customary maintenance and management of forests. Wetlands, uplands, and vernal pools, et cetera. So we're intending to, again, do the selective pruning that you would need to take care of a forest. So I, if there, you have some other language that you, I mean, some other language that you want. Again, good forest management is what we're looking.
I I don't, I don't, I'm not a forestry guy, but I do know that. For example, you ran through a couple of things. So selective pruning is one. You also are preserving the right to remove unsafe trees. I know we at the town have a pretty comprehensive tree law and have a pretty comprehensive process for deciding. Based on an arborist's recommendations and a tree council's review, what is an unsafe tree that we can remove. I I don't know if you, the university has any process like that or any process like that in in mind. You talk about in here allowing the university to conduct such standard and customary. Management of wetlands, management of vernal pools, management of upland areas. I don't know what any of that is. I don't know what that means, and I don't think the board is going to know. Maybe the board does. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm the only dummy here.
Ken, could I just offer something real quick? All all good points. I I would point out that there, that there are standards for all of these. The arborists do have classifications of pruning. And you have things like emergency, you have basic, there's class A, B, and C pruning. Everything from just the, things like the, the branch that falls and breaks off and is hanging. Up in a tree after an ice storm, all the way to the finest level of, of pruning, you know, for the. Long-term health of the tree. So these, these are well-classified and I can help you identify those. The the same with the management of wetlands. The DEC does have. Monitoring standards for the establishment of of wetlands. Both the DEC and the Army Corps of Engineers for that five-year monitoring period. That if this was a regulated wetland that they would have to comply with and prepare. Monitoring reports on an annual basis. There there could very well be referenced professional documents or standards. That could be tied to the language.
Yep, and and I, I believe that. I just don't see it referred to in this conservation easement. So if there are industry standards. Perhaps we ought to refer to those industry standards in the document. So it's not, you know, some dummy like me deciding what's an unsafe tree or what's proper pruning or. You know, it should be, it should be according to industry standard. So we can work through this, but and and I'm just trying to get a sense of what your intention is, and you're giving me that, Jared. I appreciate it that. I think we just need to tighten up the language a little bit. I am concerned about the provision at the end of this whole thing that says that the university reserves the right. To install whatever infrastructure may be necessary for the future development of the property. That sounds incredible to me.
You're talking about the exception area, future utility piping?
So right at the end, it talks about. Further provided, the grantor shall have the right to install, construct, maintain, repair, improve, replace. On that certain portion of the property designated as the exception area. Stormwater, stormwater drainage systems, facilities, I'm not sure what facilities are, and infrastructure as may be necessary for the future development on the properties. So a road is that infrastructure that may be necessary, a new parking lot? I I don't know.
Ken, I think you're, I I, I'm not sure you listened to the, to what David said. He pointed to that little area right here, in that little area, that's Exhibit A, which is the exception area, future utility piping. Right here, that we may need, again, he explained it to the board, that at some point, we want to, we may want to build that stormwater area. And we may want to connect that, the the piping or other infrastructure for the drainage right there. That to the other stormwater piping. That is the only area this reference, it's referenced right, right there in the pipe. So if anybody, I mean, that's the intent, is that we just need to be able to install those pipes and appropriate stormwater. Et cetera, as may be necessary to construct this other area. So we're essentially just carving out an area for infrastructure.
Sure, I I I get it. I can both listen and read. Despite what you might think otherwise, and what I read is not consistent with what I heard. And my experience with the university is even when we put something in writing, sometimes the university doesn't remember it. So I want to see that if it's just drainage that is intended here. And it's only drainage facilities and drainage infrastructure for this one area, let's be specific about that. Let's, let's put in language that actually says what we mean. And not just trust upon, you know, that we have to go back to some sort of public carrying record. And, you know, pull up David Cox's testimony and try to prove it that way.
That's fine. So do you have some of those languages you'd like? Ken, if there's something that you want to make as tight as you'd like it, we'd sure love to see it.
I have, honestly, I have highlights and notes about the need for definition and specificity on each and every page. I'd be happy to share that with you. And also, as I said, some suggestions about allowing for some flexibility in the future relative to. Both the extinguishment of the easement, right, and the modification of the easement. I think we can come up with a process. That the university is able to come back to the planning board or the town board, as the case may be. And make application or, you know, make a persuasive pitch as why it is that the easement ought to be. Modified or maybe even extinguished sometime in the future if circumstances change. And I think that's good for the university. I think it's good for the town.
I think it is, and I think it's, we tried to address that in paragraph six. And it says, if circumstances arise in the future that render the purpose of this conservation easement substantially impossible to accomplish. This conservation easement can be terminated or extinguished, whether in whole or in part, by judicial proceeding in a court of. Jurisdiction, all in accordance with the relevant provisions of the CL. If this conservation easement or the is taken whole and part for the exercise of power domain, grantee shall not be entitled to compensation, et cetera. So we can add language in there that authorize, you know, obviously, we can have a release of easement in the future if need be, but. I think the town's, the town boards gonna sign this, um, execution. Um, obviously, we'd have, I assume we'd have to go back to the town board for their, uh, for their relief of that. So we can, we can deal with that at that point.
Yeah, it's, no, it's just good to know that you have that flexibility too. Thank you.
Uh, may I ask a question of David? Um, David, the way that this, uh, graphic reads, um, I just, I guess I'd like to point out that there's probably some gray areas that are, that are being shown that probably could have been shown in green, but I understand that you're trying to use the green to highlight a specific, uh, conservation area, two, two different conservation areas. But the, the, the gray pavement that you're, that you're showing um, will require stormwater management. And therefore, the area immediately to the south and running uh, parallel to the edge of pavement is most likely really just, it's going to be green infrastructure before that, uh, from, from a water quality standpoint, before it goes into the larger uh, stormwater pond proposed at the east end of that parking lot. So between the parking lot and the blue uh, never, you know, no-fly zone, uh, conservation easement. So that technically could be green. There's nothing, that is, that is stormwater area. There's no paving going on there. Um, and then the area that is orange, uh, where you're showing, uh, grade slope. Um, ha- after visiting out there, I, I guess I recognize that that slope from the stormwater, uh, management area, uh, up is gonna be pretty steep. That is, that is gonna be quite an embankment, isn't it?
Yes.
So the area really from the edge of pavement to the blue, uh, buffer area, conservation area is, is really all going to be natural, but it'll be a, a, a graded slope. You're, you're not gonna get, you can't get parking on anything that is, uh, south of that existing parking lot. It's just too, it's just too steep.
Yeah, that's the current, uh, thought, yes. I mean, I've clear, obviously, nothing's been fully designed yet, but that is the intent as of right now, yeah.
Understood, but you, you've, you've generally sized the, both the, the green infrastructure, uh, whether, whether that's a rain garden or infiltration, infiltration trench in the stormwater area to the, to the east of the parking. Um, those are reasonably sized for the, for the runoff expected from either the, just the parking or possibly the parking and the, a portion of the roof of the building.
That's correct.
I guess I would be, I, I truly understand Ken's concern. I, I guess I would be could be concerned the opposite way as well, that, you know, the stormwater management areas may need to grow in size, if anything, um, in the, in the future, or it, it's possible that they, when you get into final engineering on it.
Right, or if regulations change. I mean, regulations, stormwater regulations typically change every five years, so they, they could be more restrictive.
Yeah, okay. All right. I guess I understand it better, and if this was a, uh, rather than a descriptive diagram, engineering, uh, diagram, you know, trying to show us conservation easements, and it was a a pretty picture rendering, you'd have a lot more green on here than you would gray or, you know, just pavement.
Correct.
Okay.
Bill, I did wanna make just one other observation, um, two. Uh, one is, um, that I do know that our engineering department is looking at the, um, descriptions that were provided to make sure everything closes and matches up. Um, so that work is not, I'm just letting you know, uh, David and Jared, that that work has not yet been completed, but they're working on that. Um, so, um, hopefully everything matches fine. And then, um, the other thing is, is, um, there is a, um, a project condition paragraph at the end of this concert, proposed conservation easement that effectively says, you know, we're giving you this conservation easement and the planning board or whoever's signing this document, which it's gonna be the town supervisor, actually, um, is making a representation that the town of Brighton is satisfied with, uh, uh, everything that the developer has provided for natural resource protections connected with this project. I, I don't think we're gonna be able to give you that. Um, you know, if you have some other language, um, I, I mean, I can tell you, we're not looking for more than what we're asking for here, um, if that's what the concern is. Um, but um, something as broadly stated as that is, is really not workable. And I will say the supervisor really can't bind the planning board or vice versa.
Well, yeah, maybe when we get the condition, the final conditions of approval from the planning board regarding the granting of this conservation easement, we can probably reference that particular section number, you know what I mean, in terms of the approval resolution that this satisfies that. I, I think that's what we're looking for. We wanna, you know,
Something like that'll work, yeah. Something like that'll work.
Great. Thank you, Ken and Jared. Um, other planning board members have questions or comments? Please feel free, uh, David Fader at CU, you all set?
Um, am I, am I talking now?
Yep, you're, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Um, I, I like it. Uh, I guess I think it would, it's come a long ways and I have no problems with it, and even the, uh, the, uh, non-pervious areas, I mean, they're improving the existing vegetation with a more natural, you know, no-mo vegetation. Um, so I, maybe I'm not good at legal stuff and I'm missing something that, um, Ken was worried about, but I wasn't troubled by that. I mean, maybe it's simple as saying that if you do something in there, you re-vegetate it. Um, so, no, I have no problems with this.
Thank you. Uh, Jason?
I, I generally agree. I, I, I'm, I, I, I'm not an attorney and I'll, I'll let, uh, let them work out the the, the language there, because I know that is important. Um, but I, I do appreciate what they've done. I'm, I'm good.
Thank you.
I have one other, one other minor comment, and Bill, maybe you can answer, because you seem to know more about it, but I'm assuming that since it's a conservation easement that they're not gonna go in and just cut down a dead tree because it's dead. That would have to be dangerous or something.
Um, yeah, I, I think it would have to present a danger to the, you know, to the public. Um, you know, certainly dead trees have their value within an ecosystem. Um, but I, I guess, um, you know, position of the, the tree relative to the, to the building itself, of course, it's it would be a future building, but I, I'm gonna be providing the, uh, the wording from the, uh, Arborist Association. Uh, there's both New York State chapter and federal, uh, chapters that, uh, I'll, I'll be providing that to, uh, to probably to Ramsey and Jeff and, and share with Ken as well. I don't know that that specifically answers your question.
No, I, I, it's just more, it's just more of a comment. I mean, obviously it's by a building or something, that's fine, but if it's like in the middle of it, you know, I'm, and, and I guess I, I have a tainted view because when they did, uh, the Meridian Park, um, the town actually went in and cut down all the dead trees in the conservation area, and I was like, sort of horrified, so I just thought I would mention it.
Ken, does, um, can I, are you? I'm sorry. Uh, Ken, does the town have a conservation standard form that they, that was used in the past that has all the language that you're looking for? This can't by chance, we're happy to look at it.
Ramsey, that's more your, you're the historian here.
Um, no, we do not have set language.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was gonna say, but I didn't know. Um, so, um, I, I think we're good working with your form, Jared, and I can provide you some suggestions and we'll go from there. We'll, we'll get this done.
All right, back to Karen.
No further questions.
All right, John Osowski?
No, I have no, no additional questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
No further questions.
All right. Uh, town, town staff, Ramsey or Jeff?
Um, have you worked with or, or met with a fire marshal, a town fire marshal to about fire access on the side of the building, despite the more of the potential future additions?
So we, um, the, one of the deputy fire marshals met out on site to walk the property. Uh, and after that, and, uh, he said he was gonna go back and speak with Chris Roth, uh, to go over that. And I've also, um, sent some emails and phone calls to Chris Roth, uh, asking him for, if he has any feedback. I have not heard back yet.
Well, you do need to follow up with the, uh, the fire marshal just to make sure that the plan's gonna meet the needs for fire access in the future, David. You've looked at that. I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, sure.
Especially if we're gonna do conservation easements.
Yep.
Um, so if you're having problems getting ahold of him, let me know, and I can, let me help you. So we can get that straightened out, make sure we're all square. Um, I have a question for you. Um, the distribution plans for the water system, you believe that you can address the comments of the, uh, DPW?
Yes, yep.
Get that back to us, okay? That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna ask one more time for planning board and town representatives. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to address this application?
I don't see anybody, though.
All right. Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, at this point, um, I just wanna circle back to the, uh, Cortez, uh, application, Cortez Properties for West Henrietta Road. Has anybody, uh, representing the applicant joined us, uh, since earlier in the meeting?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, and is there anyone in the audience, uh, that has a question or comment about this application, which is P O one twenty-two? Still nothing?
Nobody, nobody.
No.
All right. All right, thank you. Uh, we're, our application or, or public hearings are over for the site for tonight. Uh, we now have, um, two applications on for concept review. The first is, uh, two P N B one twenty-two, Bristol Valley Homes LLC and P E M M LLC. Uh, this is for property at thirty-one oh eight East Avenue that has been postponed at the applicant's request to our March sixteenth meeting. Um, for the next application, I am going to ask, uh, member John Osowski uh, to chair this particular application.
Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, thank you for, uh, giving me this opportunity. On the next up under new business is application two P N B two dash twenty-two. That is the application of Brighton Central School District as the property owner and Tel Medical Institute of Upstate New York as the contract bendee for concept review to repurpose the existing school building, former Brookside School, and construct approximately twenty-three thousand square feet of building addition for new classrooms and dorm rooms to allow educational and public uses on this property. And, um, anyway, I'll ask if there's anybody, um, present to, uh, to address this concept review and give us additional information and answer questions that may come from the, the board or from the, from the, uh, from the town. Thank you.
Uh, John, before the applicant starts, I would like to say that this is just a concept. This is not a, a public hearing. There will be public hearings if this application moves forward in the future. There will be applications and, uh, of public hearings in the future. Will you have an opportunity to address this forward? I also want everyone to know that's listening, because I know there's quite a few of you out there. We've received a number of communications. Many of them made it on the agenda. Some of them did not get on the, this agenda, but will be placed on the next agenda. And all communications will be given to the board, uh, for their consideration and review as part of this project. And, um, so you're welcome to stay and listen, but again, this is not a, a public hearing at this time. There will be further opportunity in the future. Thank you.
Right, thanks, Ramsey.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Acting Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Goldman. I'm the attorney and agent for the Town Mutual Institute of Upstate New York, who is, uh, who is the applicant, uh, for this project. As the acting chairman pointed out, uh, this, this application deals with the former Brookwood, uh, Brookside Elementary School property uh, located on twenty-eight acres on the east side of, uh, of South Wynton Road, west of Idlewood Road. Uh, the property itself is zoned R L B. The existing fifty-five thousand square foot building has historically been used first as an elementary school by the Brighton Central School District. And then when it was decommissioned as a school, it's been used for a number of uses, including, uh, most famously and primarily the Brighton Parks and Recreation Department, the Brighton Food Cupboard, the Montessori School, as well as offices for Brighton Volunteer Ambulance and the Monroe County School Boards Association. The proposal which is being made, uh, by the Town Mutual Institute is to relocate, uh, their school to this property as a campus. Uh, they will op, op, um, occupy, uh, approximately twenty-three thousand five hundred square feet on the western side of the, uh, of the existing building. And as the acting chairman pointed out, at twenty-three thousand square feet, um, for dorms and classroom area. In addition, a proposed expansion area of nine thousand square feet is proposed for this area. The entire Town Mutual Institute, Town Mutual Institute, uh, development will be oriented towards South Wynton Road um, in an effort to not impact the existing residential neighborhood in Evans Farms. Uh, primary tenants for the remainder of the building at this point would appear to be Brighton Parks and Recreation and the Montessori School. Uh, Brighton Parks and Rec is a permitted use in the R L B zoning district. Private nonprofit secondary schools and colleges are conditional permitted uses and therefore will require a conditional use permit from the planning board. This is a residential high school. Um, similarly in the R L B district, uh, Monroe Community College has dormitories on their campus. We are proposing a residential component here. The educational product of this is a high-intensity educational experience for the students. Uh, student classroom days run from seven forty-five in the morning till roughly eight-thirty at night with breaks, uh, as appropriate. And, uh, and to that extent, uh, there is, uh, there is not a whole lot of free time, which is, of free time which is, uh, without, for the, uh, for the students. Um, with, with that basic introduction, what I'll do is turn this over to Matt Tomlinson, who is a project engineer, uh, who will give us the concept level review of the engineering issues involved. Also with us this evening is Rabbi Sefan Noble of the Town Medical Institute of Upstate New York who, uh, will be available. Any questions that either Matt or I can't handle? So with that, Matt?
Yeah, great Jerry. Thank you. Uh, Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering. As Jerry mentioned, we're the civil engineers on the project. Jeff, I think we had also submitted a, a map with some color on it. I didn't know if it was possible for you to display that as I talked to it, just so I can, uh, refer to some colors that may help, uh, with your pointer as I highlight some things for the board. Yeah, thank you. So as Jerry mentions, the twenty-one point eight acre parcel with existing infrastructure on it. Uh, currently, there is, um, existing access from both east and west, uh, being a driveway, single driveway off of Wynton Road South that provides access to the front parking on the Wynton roadside and then a, uh, what was previously constructed as a bus loop and additional parking on the east side that enters off of Idlewood Road. Uh, the blue on the map that the board is seeing right now represents the existing school building that is present on the site. The brown and lighter brown is the proposed first phase and then future phase of the buildings that Jerry mentioned, which creates a courtyard that will be private and primarily for the use of, uh, the Tel Medical Institute. And we can dive into that a little bit later. In the red that is or the light red color that is indicated on the plan, that's the proposed additional pavements. And, uh, I think the board will note that we have attempted to somewhat limit the amount of additional pavement that will be added to the site because there is quite a bit of existing infrastructure there that is proposed to be utilized. We'll be upgrading ADA and traffic circulation, a drop-off, uh, loop at the front of the school for visitors and for events. And then, uh, because it is a residential school, there will be a, uh, kitchen component within there where meals will be prepared, served to the students living on site and some rear of house function being dumpsters, uh, staff parking. And, uh, last but not least, from a circulation and a pavement standpoint are the requirements of the New York State Fire Code as well as Brighton's local ordinance. The building will be fully sprinkled and the driveway that connects to the existing hardscape play area from the previous school use and where the basketball court is now will be utilized for fire apparatus access and turnaround movements. And the intention is to limit or not to provide circular connection for vehicular activities between the two access points being Idlewild, Idlewood and Wynton. Uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, the site itself and then we can get into any questions that the board may have. So the construction access is entirely intended to be off of Wynton Road and we've really focused the proposed development towards Wynton Road and that is with, uh, the neighborhood and anticipated comments and questions in mind as far as access. Uh, this, uh, property when it became available was brought to us and we really looked at several different locations for this proposed building addition, including on the Idlewood side, uh, because there, the infrastructure that services this property, including sanitary water, gas and electric are primarily fed from that side. Uh, it's outside of any floodplain constraints or limitations, which I'll touch on in a minute. And, um, we really lend itself to a simpler and more cost-effective, uh, building construction. However, given anticipated impacts to neighbors, secret considerations and some other things, you know, we looked at a couple of different alternatives and landed with, I think, what really is, uh, an opportunity for the purchaser, Tel Medical Institute to be provided the functionality, the space and, uh, the infrastructure that they need while lessening or minimizing as much as possible any impact to the neighbors uh, by it. And, uh, so with that in mind, I'll just step through a couple of the potential items that we are going to have to work through with this board and with staff as we go through the approval process. One being, uh, this is within a, a floodplain EPod area. Uh, there's a light gray area or line represented on the plan that indicates the hundred-year floodplain associated with Allen's Creek. There's also a federal wetland that we had delineated by environmental resources within the woodlot area, uh, further to the west on the property. We are staying entirely out of that delineated area. And there's also quite a bit of woods that buffer, uh, this property and along the creek for repairing buffer that we are proposing to, uh, maintain in its entirety. So while the site is twenty-one point eight acres, some of those constraints, neighbor considerations and those environmental, uh, items do somewhat limit the developable area. And so that's really what has driven the selection and, uh, progression of the design on this property while again, uh, meeting the needs for the ultimate end user. Existing utilities are intended to remain the same. There's an existing storm sewer outfall towards Allen's Creek. And the proposed stormwater management facility located up at the top of the page is intended to tie into and discharge to that existing storm sewer outfall so that we are not creating any new outfalls to Allen's Creek. That stormwater management facility is sized, uh, conceptually to treat the quantity requirements for discharge in that the D E C requires that no greater than the existing rate can be discharged from the site. We'll also have some additional green infrastructure practices that will be provided as we advance design throughout the site. This site does qualify as a redevelopment project, so there are some, um, flexibility allowed within the design requirements for that. Uh, sanitary and water fed, as I mentioned, from Idlewood as long with gas and electric. Uh, those will be further examined, but our initial exploration indicates that they are adequately sized for the proposed, uh, resident load and uses that will be within the building. Uh, I just wanted to talk a little bit about separations and distances to give the board, uh, a, uh, framework for what we're talking about. So the existing eastmost uh, portion of the building is approximately a hundred and sixty feet from the rear property line of the Idlewood Road neighbors. Our nearest, uh, building for the proposed addition is the future addition. And that is approximately three hundred and sixty feet, excuse me, three hundred and thirty feet from that same property. So almost double the distance of the existing building. So again, I, I know we're gonna talk a little bit about, uh, neighbors and or, uh, the sighting of the building, but I wanted to give the board a framework to indicate how far away we are compared to the existing building. And then, uh, I just wanted to talk through a couple of other things. The floodplain, uh, we are having a slight encroachment into the one hundred-year floodplain. We've had initial conversations with uh, the Commissioner of Public Works, the town engineer being Everett Garcia. And the town operates as the floodplain administrator, so we'll be fully in compliance with, uh, demonstrating that we will not have any impact on flooding to Allen's Creek through means of compensatory storage and additional floodplain study as necessary. And as part of our, uh, future planning board approval efforts, we will of course have to obtain an EPod permit in addition to the preliminary and final site plan approvals that will be necessary. We have gone through a, a zoning analysis on this and reviewed that with staff in some pre-application meetings. We have not identified any variances that will be necessary as part of this proposed approval. We are well below the thresholds for building coverage, uh, for required green space, for setbacks and for parking. And I did wanna talk about parking a little bit. We are proposing, uh, a hundred and seventy spaces in total on the site. Um, the required calculated by the existing uses within the building as they currently stand are a hundred and twenty-eight spaces. And I wanted to, uh, we got some question early on from town staff asking for some justification on the number of spaces that were provided. And the number of spaces calculated as required by code for the Tel Medical Institute, which is based on number of students and gathering space, is fifty-seven spaces. The existing parking spaces on the west side of the building is right at fifty-eight spaces and to provide some flexibility both for tenants that would be in the existing, uh, north portion of the blue building while limiting, uh, any traffic. And our intention is to, uh, keep all traffic for the new use as well as what currently utilizes the Wynton Road South. So that existing traffic levels stay the same or lesser on the Idlewood side. Are, to add a few spaces and also to upgrade for ADA requirements as we improve the site for the new building. And so this proposed, uh, the pieces in red are those ADA upgrades, as I mentioned, along the south side of the existing lot. A row of nine parking spaces up along the northern portion of the building. And then creation of approximately ten spaces at the rear near the uh, kitchen and staff parking area where a dumpster enclosure will also be provided. So what we are currently showing is seventy-two spaces on the western portion of Wynton. Again, in order to provide slightly in excess of what's required by code for the Tel Medical Institute to also provide some overlapping or shared parking with prospective tenants on that northern portion. And then the parking and circulation on the Idlewood side would stay exactly as exists today. I, and my final, uh, thing before I turn it back over to Jerry is we did appear before the conservation board last week. I presented this plan to them, same one as we're showing to you today. They had a few questions and comments afterwards and those included, um, some question relative to the floodplain and drainage, which I've explained, uh, to you today, just like I did to them relative to our full intention and requirements to comply with stormwater mitigation for quantity, quality in our floodplain uh, mitigation and compensatory storage requirements. They also asked us to ensure that we were providing dark sky lighting, uh, which I neglected to mention and I will now. We'll be providing dark sky compliant lighting on the west portion of Wynton Road. There are several existing lights along the pavement and entry areas on the eastern side of the property or towards Idlewood. Those lights are intended to remain exactly as they are today. Um, they're a post-top style light and there are no proposed improvements to that side. Uh, that lighting will be appropriate in height, probably eighteen to twenty feet. Dark sky compliant cutoff fixtures and again, over the three hundred feet away from neighboring property lines. So there's no anticipated impact from a lighting standpoint. And, uh, the conservation board's final comment was requesting us as a design and ownership team to consider amending or supplementing the existing tree line or landscaping at the rear of some of the Idlewood and the other street escapes my name, excuse me, further to the south along the property. And, uh, we will definitely consider that as we continue in our design, but again, we think that uh, the greatest mitigation that we can offer and have offered really is the placement of the building and proposed infrastructure, uh, far away from those neighbors. So with that, Jerry, uh, if I missed anything, of course, chime in, but I wanna turn that back over to you to continue our discussion with the board.
Okay, um, thank you, Matthew. Uh, let me make a couple of points. One, as we all know, it's pretty challenging to review a twenty-one point eight acre site on, uh, on a zoom screen. But the one thing that you will notice is that we are not proposing any changes to the area on the east side of the building. Uh, any improvements are all on the west of the building, including the building addition, enhancements to the access and parking area and the like. We certainly have, um, we certainly have received comments and reviewed the comments, if you will, uh, which were filed with the board. Uh, we are going to go through those this evening, uh, because we are going to have a Zoom neighborhood meeting uh, in presentation, which is scheduled for March third. So before we are back before this board for anything, we will have had a Zoom neighborhood meeting to discuss, uh, the issues, but I will highlight the fact, I highlight a few facts anyway, uh, that we expect to be dealing with. One, um, is that based on the information we have, and Matt, you can verify or comment, uh, it's our anticipation that all construction traffic will be coming off of South Wynton Road and not through, uh, and not through the Evans Farm neighborhood.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Jerry.
Uh, yeah, I think the neighbors can feel in good hands with the engineering, not only of the, uh, the project applicant, but also the town does their review of the stormwater and drainage issues, which are a focal issue for the neighborhood. It, it comes up in almost every single letter, every single comment that we have received, impacts on the floodplain, impacts on uh, flow into the creek, uh, et cetera. Uh, there is some discussion also about shared use of facilities. We have to explore that a little bit further um, internally and with, uh, and with the neighborhood. But at the same time, we anticipate that any traffic, and since this is a residential campus, we don't expect a lot of traffic going out to South Wynton. But we certainly aren't expecting, uh, uh, much of a delta, if any, of traffic going out to, uh, Idlewild at all. Idlewood, excuse me, and I'm back to the JFK airport. It's the Idlewood, uh, access which is there. Uh, so with that, um, and having talked about the lighting, I saw there was a comment in the chat about the number of lights. We'll be getting that. Uh, we will also, as we go further in design, talk about dark sky compliant, which is a lighting technique to contain white spill on the property. Uh, that will all be fleshed out as we move forward in the, uh, in the design process. So with that, uh, with that, we will take any questions and comments that the board has. We're here at a concept to try to get comments from the board so that we can better, uh, position our applications for uh, site plan approval and conditional use permit. So we appreciate your attention and ask, uh, for any comments that you may have or questions.
All right, tha- thank you, Jerry, and, uh, thank you, Matt, for the, uh, for the information and the explanations. Um, I'd like to start with a basic question regarding the the need for the building additions. So, I mean, my question is if some of those tenants were not in the building, the Montessori School, you know, uh, the recreation department, uh, the food cupboard, if some of those tenants moved out, there would be other space in the building available for use by the Tel Medic Institute. So why, why isn't that or was that given enough consideration, not given enough consideration? Was that rejected because they wanted the tenants to remain? The tenants have long, long-term, you know, leases? I mean, I have no idea. It makes no sense to me to build new when you have that appears to be a big enough footprint that you don't need to build, other, other than the dormitories, of course, uh, the living spaces, but um, can somebody kind of explain that to me about the thought processes going on here?
Sure, love it. Let me, uh, let me try and then Mac can chime in. But the primary, the primary driver of the, of the additional space is the dormitory space, not, not as much the classroom space, but primarily the dormitory space solely because it's nearly impossible, uh, to, or pretty much impossible to retrofit uh, the existing school building for, uh, internal residential purposes. It, it, it's logically makes no sense to do that. Uh, we certainly want to have, uh, as modern of facility available for our students in that, in that particular area. Uh, we're right now talking about twenty-three thousand square foot, uh, addition with, with perhaps a nine thousand square foot if enrollment booms, uh, in this particular, uh, facility. So, um, again, it's tucked in within the building. If you take a look at the way that it's structured, uh, its visual impact is, is nominal. Our building coverage on this overall site is, is even a full buildout, less than ten percent. And then again, you can't really get And then again, you can't really get full justice of that if you have uh on on a plan of this size and looking at our zoom screens. But even even with everything, the overall of previous surface as well within uh the town's normal standard. So we're we're not talking about certainly overbuilding the site, but we're talking about rightsizing it uh to what uh to what we need to do.
And Jerry or John, if I could chime in on that, so there's a a couple of other considerations in our talks with the architect and the owner, and I I don't understand all the ins and outs, but I'll share that with the board. So I my understanding is there are some um materials within the existing building that would require some quite expensive abatement and other things like asbestos or other chemicals in there that would need to be abated if the existing building was modified in such a way to allow uh some of the residential and other uses specific to the new uh school or intended use. Whereas if the existing tenants stay in it without modifying it, such as moving walls, doorways, changing windows, uh that kind of thing, uh they can have then the rental income for the space as well as not having to have the expense to uh deal with those items. So there's definitely a significant cost consideration to what you're suggesting uh as well, if it was entirely tried to be housed in that existing building.
If I could just add to what um Matt and Jerry were saying, uh just to supplement this question, how much of the existing Brookside School without the addition is the Telmutical Institute going to use for classroom and other space, including the gymnasiums?
Probably going to be occupying about twenty three thousand five hundred square feet of this building um under under our current architectural view of this. And that in part is designed to accommodate what we view as the more public and educational uses in the balance. Montessori uh potentially Brighton, well Brighton Parks and Recreation in currently. Um and there are other other users as well. And and everyone should understand, in the R L B zoning district, we are so we are constrained in terms of the uses that are allowed either by permitted use or conditional use permit. And by permitted use, I did point out that Brighton Parks and Rec as a Brighton uh town use uh is a permitted use in the R L B district. If there are other uses which are related to the town of Brighton, uh those uses would uh would also be permitted. Schools are permitted as well um as a conditional use. So to that extent, uh there should be some comfort knowing that uh the types of uses that would be going in here would be either public or uh or school or perhaps religious uses also are within a category of um of conditional use in the town of Brighton. So we thank you for that clarification, Ken.
So can you tell me how many classrooms does the Montessori School have?
Do we have that number, Matt? I don't know if we have it specifically.
I I'd really like to see a tabulation of how many square feet all the different tenants have. You know, how many square feet Montessori has, how many classrooms they're using? Because I can appreciate that you don't want to do major modifications to a classroom. I I know those classrooms have asbestos floor tile. As long as you leave those floor tile in good condition, you could just leave them on the floor. You don't have to remove them. Um so I mean, if if a classroom with asbestos floor tile is good enough for Montessori, it should be good enough for the Telmetic Institute. Um but anyway, I I I'd really like to see a tabulation of all the uses of the existing building so that we can make a a better determination, evaluation of of the need for this uh for the uh the building addition that's being proposed here.
Yeah, Bill, Bill.
I would like to interject here. I've been waiting um for a space here, but I would really like to know um what uh size of a residential student population are we looking at uh in addition to uh non-student faculty, staff, what have you, to give me a sense of of the scale, the scope of this uh enterprise.
Okay, I I can provide a little bit of that now in sense of proportion. Uh we're currently anticipating sixty resident uh students. There are five students that are uh roughly five, between five and ten, who are relatives of faculty members who may drive in with the uh with the faculty. Uh I'm not sure of the exact number of faculty uh that we have currently. Uh but certainly it's enough to provide the educational uh product and content on the site. Um and.
But additional, that show that I'm I'm, you know, not just the uh the the faculty, teaching faculty, but who would actually be living on site? What's what are we looking at the numbers?
Okay, we're we're talking, we're talking about a limited number of additional people. There are uh adult dorm counselors who are there to monitor what's going on uh on a full time basis. Um so I I think the numbers of total people uh probably is in the sixty to seventy range.
So sixty students and ten non-student?
Right.
You said sixty residents, and then you said sixty, seventy totals, so I assume that there would be just ten non-students.
Uh that would be probably the maximum, that would be the maximum of the numbers.
So will your stormwater pond be underwater in a hundred year flood?
Yeah, so uh good question, David. So that's one of the things that we will be working with Ever and Mike on. The stormwater management facility will be required to provide the bu- storage for the volume created by the site over and above what's required by that hundred year storm. So we've also showed some potential cont- uh compensatory storage areas along the west edge of the site, uh which are shown just west of the uh multipurpose kind of grass field that's there as well as the roadway so that we can provide both the stormwater and the compensatory storage that's going to be required. So that can be accomplished in a couple of different ways. That can be accomplished with a a backwater check valve to ensure that uh the hundred year floodwater can't back into that stormwater management facility. Uh it can be oversized to provide storage above uh that hundred year floodplain elevation within that same volume. So th- those are items that we'll work through as part of the preliminary and final design.
Okay, I I'll I'll have a better idea when I see the the topo for this site.
Yep.
The uh parking lot in the upper right hand corner of the site plan. Um is that mainly for use now, say, by the Montessori teachers and the Brighton Recreation People? Or who who uses that parking lot?
The times that I have been here, that parking area has been very likely used. I assume it is primarily related to the uh Montessori School use. And some of the other, and maybe some of the other offices are there. Like I said, there are small offices for the School Boards Association as well as uh as Brighton Volunteer Ambulance, uh Brighton Food Cupboard. I think Brighton Food Cupboard is up in that area too.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Okay, I I don't have any other questions at this point in time. Uh Ramsey, Ken Gordon, you have any questions?
Um so Matt, uh you talked about construction traffic um coming in from the Winton, the South Winton Road entrance. Um do you know what the weight bearing load of the Allen's Creek Bridge is? Have you gotten that data yet?
Uh no, I haven't. It's uh if there's additional information required, we can definitely provide it. It was sufficient for uh school bus loading as well as emergency vehicle loading, which is quite uh heavy, as you know, I previously, but we have not done any additional structural investigation at this point.
You're going to be bringing uh loaded cement trucks across that bridge?
Uh yes, we will to build it. Yep.
Um Jerry, this is a question for you. I can't remember if we discussed this or not. Um but in your zoning analysis, if you have not already covered this, please also cover whether uh you're going to need to apply for a conditional use permit for the Montessori School.
I think we're, at this point, we're anticipating we've uh that application will have to be made. And and that's something that we should talk about. Certainly, the Montessori School currently exists. I think the position was it because it was in school property, it didn't require a conditional use permit. And now that it is going to be an ownership other than the school district. Uh I don't think that we have finished that discussion, uh but we can, we certainly can uh continue that.
Yeah, Jay, just, you know, provide us some, you know, analysis, I, you know, just to get us make to make sure we don't miss that issue. I think we do need to resolve that.
We're kind of.
Uh just to clarify, you guys don't expect any additional traffic coming from the east side of the building of the Idlewood Road?
Uh that's correct. We do not anticipate any, the the intention and what we are proposing is that all traffic, construction, operation, everything else for the Telmutical Institute specifically will only access the site off of Winton Road. Um a- and that's what we're proposing at this point.
Right.
Have uh you looked at any possibility of a public access easement across the property from the Evans Farm neighborhood?
We've we've taken a look at it and explored it. Part part of the problem that we have are the environmental constraints that we have talked about previously, but even even more uh to my mind is what happens when you get out to South Winton? First of all, um we only have the one uh the one uh bridge, if you will, that that goes across, it'll be used for vehicles. But second, you you come out and there's no sidewalk over on uh on Winton Road. So I I'm not sure of the utility of it to the extent that um there's an ability to get out from Evans Lane onto West Fall uh across the street and get to a sidewalk, either going north to school or going uh west to Buckham.
Ramsey, you got anything further?
No, I do not.
All right. Well, good. Well, thank you very much.
Any board, any other board member, Mr. Acting Chairman or or is that? I I don't know if anyone else had any comments that they wanted to share.
Any other board members have any questions, comments at this time?
I'm I'm good.
You're good.
I have a clarifying question for Jerry. When we talk about the uses that are going to be on the site and that it's it's a mix of the Telmutic Institute and public uses. Uh and you mentioned the Brighton offices and the Montessori School, and it includes Parks and Rec. Does that mean that there will be um uses that would be outside of the existing building in a recreational sense on the site? Use of outdoor area at all, or is that all the public uses are all inside the existing building?
Right. I I don't think we anticipate any exterior uh recreational uses of the other facilities that are there right now that would be used in conjunction with the school.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Look forward to uh additional information and seeing this project progress.
Is this some, is yeah, you're not bringing this back after for further discussion after the uh after deliberation on the other applications? Is that that's it for this evening?
Tonight? Yeah, yeah, we won't. Yeah, we we uh we won't do that. That's correct. We will not further discuss this later.
Hey, for the benefit of neighbors, uh everyone can go home. Oh, everyone is home, but.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Well, thank you.
All right, uh Bill Price can zoom back in again?
I'm here. Thank you.
All right.
All right, uh so let's, I gotta find my way back to the agenda. Uh the okay, so that that concluded our one of our, one of our concept reviews will be coming next month um with regard to thirty one oh eight East Avenue. I think at this point, we can circle back and um talk about the applications through our deliberations at this point. Uh the first application is twelve P O two dash twenty one, the application of F S I Construction at thirty three hundred Brighton Henry Town Line Road. Uh this is for preliminary final site plan approval, EPOD for water course uh permit approval and demolition review and approval. And that demolition is to raise the existing single family building that is on site. Uh do we have a motion to close the the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Altman seconded, Abcock Steiner made the motion. All right, moved and seconded. Are there and is there any discussion on closing the hearing?
No.
Okay, Ramsey, please call the roll.
Ford.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Abcock Steiner.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve preliminary and final of sorry, I moved this round. Okay, our EPOD and the demolition review. I think the first, Ramsey, is there demolition review, a separate approval, or they can they be all made at once?
Um you have to make uh uh the separate findings for the demolition. Demolition conditions are all part of the uh uh recommended conditions for approval.
I see. Nope. Uh does anyone care to make a motion on this application?
I move that the uh go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, you can do it.
All right, um I move that the planning board adopts the, let's see here, ten findings outlined in the planning board report, the application submitted, testimony presented, and the determination comments and recommendations of the Historic Planet Preservation Commission, Architectural Review Board, and Conservation Board. That's for demolition.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Ramsey, you wanna call the roll on this?
Number Vader.
Hi.
Price.
Bye.
Altman.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Findings adopted.
Thank you. All right, um preliminary and final substance, I'm sorry, site plan and final EPOD. Any any takers to make a motion? Jason?
I'm looking at the EPOD one, trying to find out what I do for that.
All right. All right.
Um, one thing we need to do before we go into the proof is just make sure that we handle seeker.
Okay.
Yeah, we've made the findings on the demolition.
Yeah.
I don't, where, where's the EPOD? I don't see what I need to do for the EPOD.
There is nothing for the EPOD, uh, Jason. Um, there's the seeker findings.
Oh, okay, alright.
And then go into your um, application approval.
Oh, okay, alright.
Both did seeker though.
Okay. So I moved that the planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment. The planning board and the planning board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff. I also move that the uh, planning board approves application. Uh, what is this? Uh, twelve P O two twenty-one. Based on testimony given, plan submitted and the. The, whoa boy, uh, forty conditions outlined in the planning board report.
I'll second that.
I moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hey.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Proved with conditions.
Thank you. Uh. Yes, we do have to do, we have to. Take action on twelve P O one twenty-two Ortiz properties.
I would recommend that the hearing be kept open and that the matter be adjourned to the March meeting for representation. By the applicant.
Uh, does a board members need to say that, or can we say so moved?
Is uh, does someone want to adopt that motion?
In fact, technically, it's a motion to table.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to table, uh. Twelve P O one twenty-one.
That's two P zero one.
So, okay, two P twenty-one until um. The applicant can attend.
And it's two P O one twenty-two.
That's right. And a motion by Vader.
I'll second.
Price.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
Thank you, uh, please call the roll.
Ford.
Hi.
Bowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Bryce.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
The application's table.
Right. Um. Application two P O two twenty-two. This is twenty-nine hundred Monroe Avenue LLC and Unlimited Nutrition LLC for a conditional use permit approval. Uh, for their facility at twenty-nine hundred Monroe Avenue. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Um, also moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
I don't open on the second.
Altman beat him out, um. Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Sowski.
Hi.
And Ford.
Hi.
Is there a motion to? Of conditional use permit?
I'll move that the planning board approves application. Two P O two twenty-two based on testimony given, plan submitted and the. Twelve conditions outlined in the planning board report.
We have a second.
Again.
Thank you. Ford's second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I um, stopped listening for a second, to be quite honest. Um, did we do seeker on this?
No, I did not have seeker as part of that original motion.
Right.
Let me, we have a negative back to a doctor.
Amend, uh, you want me to amend the motion?
If you would accept as a friendly amendment, the finding that. The um, proposed project is not likely to have a significant impact on the environment and that. The board would like to adopt the proposed negative declaration drafted by staff.
So accepted. It was so friendly.
Julie, you, Julie, you agree?
I agree.
You seconded, so, okay, uh, moved, seconded, as amended. Any further discussion? All right, please call the roll, Ramsey.
Ford.
Hi.
Sowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Hi. Altman.
Hi.
Okay. That brings us to the applicators. Now, these are. Two applications, Randy, do we want, this is a James Tabby. Do we want to approve them individually or approve them combined?
No, they're combined.
Combined.
I move. I move we uh, close the public hearing for ten P E N B two twenty-one. And two P O four twenty-two.
Second.
Okay. All right. Moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
All right, please. I would like to have the condition that the A R B approval is required.
This is uh, for ta, this is for closing the hearing.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
I got a member price.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Sowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Hearing is closed.
All right. We have a motion, this would now be preliminary and final. Uh, site plan, preliminary and final EPOD. Uh, in EPOD permits, um.
I move. I move the board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff. And the board grants preliminary site plan approval and preliminary EPOD permits approval. For ten P N B two twenty-one and the board grants final site plan approval and final EPOD. Permits approval for two P O four dash twenty-two based on the testimony given, plan submitted. And the thirty-two conditions.
I'll second.
Wait, do we need to add that thirty-third condition for A R B? Is that the place to do it now?
Yep.
And if, and I, if we could just put that condition on the record so it's clear, please?
Jeff, you do that?
Yeah, the condition would be um, A R B approval is required prior to final approval.
And I have no problem with that.
Me either.
We, we've, we've made a motion for final approval.
You mean, you mean final approval before the commissioner of public works finds the plants?
Yes.
Okay. Just say that they need to get an architecture review book prior to the issuance of building permit. How about that?
Other than that.
Modified language. The, who, who made the, who made the motion, David?
Yes.
Okay, you're, you're good with the modified language?
Yes, I have no, no problem with that.
And who seconded?
I did, and I'm good with it as well.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
Okay, thank you. So, moved and seconded as amended. Is there any further discussion? All right, Ramsey, please call the roll.
Uh, who seconded? I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Jason.
I thought, uh, all was just, okay. With um, Vader made the motion, okay. Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Sowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Proved with conditions.
Thank you. Uh, brings us to our uh, application. Twelve the N B one twenty-one, University of Rochester. For preliminary site plan approval, preliminary EPOD permit. Uh, and preliminary conditional use permit for. The project at two fifty East River Road.
I would uh, suggest that the board consider closing the public hearing.
Aren't we gonna, isn't the motion to table?
It's the table, but I think we're done with the hearing. The reason for tabling is to work out the concept. Is to work out specific things. I don't think we need to continue the public hearing per se. Unless you guys want to, it was just a thought.
No, I just wanted to understand.
I agree with you, Ramsey.
I'll, I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
We got uh, Price.
Or it's an alt.
We got Altman seconding it to close the hearing.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion on the public hearing? Please call the roll.
Ford.
Hi.
Sowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Price.
Bye.
Altman.
Hi.
Ramsey, um. At, at this point. He, are you, I, 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 I know the, the concerns that Ken has on the easement language, I'm. Feeling more comfortable that those are. Resolvable. Um. On the engineering issue of hydraulics and the. Uh, the water system. Are, are you comfortable that we're down to? Details of. Engineering calculations that we're, we're talking about that level of detail and. Not some of the broader. Land use and. Uh, site plan issues.
Um, I would agree to that. Those are, why I want to get resolution on those issues, so I can prepare a determination of significance. Um, I would be uh, recommending that a negative declaration. Uh, be prepared for the action.
Okay.
Uh, based on the information that they've submitted, uh, Ken can work on the conservation easement with Jared. Um, and David Cox can finish up the um, hydraulic analysis with the Department of Public Works. There are a number of outs, still outstanding items that they need to address as part of the site plan. Um, what they could do is address them in their final application. And combine preliminary and final together.
Okay, so.
I think we got through the hard stuff and I do have confidence that the rest of it can be worked out between Ken and Jared. We just need to understand what they want to do.
Yeah, I.
I, yeah, if it was, if it was just the conservation easement that we needed to work out, there's, there would be no reason to hold off approval.
Can you, you, you froze up?
If anything, you could just approve it subject to final approval of the language of the concept.
You, you, we lost you, Ken.
We, we, we lost you. You said something brilliant that we need to hear.
Well, I rather doubt that. Did you hear that?
Well. Ramsey, would, would we be in a position to make a, a preliminary determination without seeker?
No.
We can't do that, so we need to table.
No, we do need to table. I need to do, do the determiner significance and then we're free to. Start granting approvals, um, except really up to the applicant when they want to do. The next cutoff that they could make is for the April uh, planning board meeting for the final approval. Um, I'd be glad to talk with David about the process. Um, but I, I do not have a problem with combining the two together.
All right. Yeah.
That's usually the easiest way, but I'll leave that up to David and what he wants to do as the engineer.
All right, the uh. The question of lead agency, is, is that clarified at this point?
Yes.
Ram, Ramsey, is, is lead agency established?
I'm sorry, Bill, yes, it has been. We work, we're with the, the planning board and um, uh, at the, yeah, next meeting could declare itself lead agency.
All right, okay. Then, uh, knowing that the, the, you know, we're, we're really down to just. Getting the uh. Uh. You know, some of the details on the, on the conservation and the, and the engineering, I, I feel. And that we can combine preliminary and final. Uh, that we can uh. Table this, knowing that it will get worked out by the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm feeling pretty comfortable about it.
Okay.
I mean, it's still work to be done, but I think.
Yeah.
Hardest part, and two, I need to make sure you guys were okay. If we're okay, that looks like an acceptable mitigation, then we move forward with a negative declaration, is my recommendation.
All right.
And I will prepare that.
Uh, Jeff and Brandon, could you, could you, yeah, thank you. Um, all right, then I would, I would make a motion to table. Uh, application. Twelve P N B one twenty-one. Um, and I'm not looking at the. Conditions, Ramsey, but can you tell me how many conditions?
Yes, uh, Bill, there is uh, seven items that we'd like to have addressed.
Okay. Uh. Yeah, table based, uh.
Based on the seven items.
Ending, ending receipt of application information for the seven items. Uh, mentioned by the, by the town staff. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
That's Vader.
Okay. We are moved and seconded any further discussion on tableing the university's application? Okay, please call the roll.
Last thing, David, if you need help with the fire marshal contacting him, let me know, because we do need to make sure you got good fire access. That's last thing. Okay, you ready?
Ready.
Uh, Ford.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Price.
Bye.
Altman.
Hi.
All right. Thank you, um. That, does that wrap everything up except for signs, Ramsey?
I would say so.
All right, let's, um. Jeff, you're on.
Brandon, if you can get up. The first sign is sixteen thirty-six thirty-five. It was tabled at the last meeting. Because there was some additional information of the A R B required of the applicant. The A R B has since approved. The application as, as represented and um. This is for a freestanding sign at the Whole Foods Plaza.
And in this, with this additional information, A R B did recommend approval.
They did.
Um. All in, uh, sorry, I make a motion to approve as recommended by A R B.
I'll second that.
All right, please.
Second. Um.
David Vader seconded.
Yep.
Go ahead, you can call the roll, Jeff.
Uh, Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Motion is approved and recommended. The next sign is sign sixteen thirty-six, it's seventeen oh seven, printed. The next sign is sign 1636. It's at 1707 Crittendon Road. It's for, for a tax. It's a file sign that's placed, replaced in a box, existing box. It was approved, it was approved by the Architecture Review Board.
Okay, that's, Jeff, that's in the box. It's already there.
Yep, just a new vinyl sign that's going into the box.
All right.
I make a motion to approve as recommended by ARB.
I'll second that.
Price approved, Vader seconded.
Okay. Seconded, please call the roll, Jeff.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Abcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
The prude is presented by the Architecture Review Board.
Right. I believe that concludes our agenda for the evening. We will.
Everyone, thank you. Holly, thank you. Yeah. Brendan, Jason, guys, thank you for all your help.
All right.
Have a good one, folks.
See you next month.
Take care.
Everyone.
Good night.
Appreciate all your effort, as always.
Bye, everybody.